Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance of the council chamber and presented to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at an appropriate time, and each person is allowed three minutes of speaking time. So I'm going to call this order convene at the regular council meetings, city council for Tuesday, January 28th at 6:00 PM. Please rise for the invocation and pledge allegiance. Please join me in prayer. Lord, thank you for gathering us here together today, and thank you for all of our wonderful volunteers in the city of Grand Terrace. The city is truly blessed to have people who love other people, who care, and willing to go that extra mile, God. God, I just continue to ask and pray that you be with the families who lost their lives during the fire and be with the people who lost their homes, they've lost everything, God. Just bless them and give them faith, Lord, to keep moving forward. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen. Please join me for a pledge. Ready to begin.
(Inaudible)
Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sabino.
Here.
Mayor Hussey.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. This opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any items not on the agenda but may briefly respond to the statements made or ask questions for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff for questions raised during public comment or may request the matter be agendized for future meetings. Is there any public comment?
Yes, Lisa Green.
Now, is this, this isn't about Edison, right? Okay, come on down. Because we do have agenda on the consent counter for Edison.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to talk and ask about help with J.C. Wallace. Unfortunately, we have seen an increase of panhandling and loitering by our store and the facility where we're actually located. I don't know, I've reached out to J.C. Wallace, I've asked for help for them, but I don't see that they have anything for those residents to do. I don't know if we can do something in the city that helps rehabilitate them to get them back into working order, or if it's just a house where they live. But as you can see, there's more and more of the residents just walking up and down Grand Terrace, and what they do is they come by our stores and they sit there all day long smoking, and it deters other people coming into our store. So I just, I'm asking for help, guidance on what to do. I want to try and solve the situation instead of being one that's negative about it. I know that there are some there that really are trying to rehabilitate themselves, but then obviously there's others that, you know, they're just sitting and wandering and panhandling, and I just don't want to keep on seeing that in front of our store. So I'm asking for help. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. It is an ongoing situation that the council is aware of and we're taking care of, so there's some stuff that we can't tell you because of legal things, but we'll follow up on it, okay? Thank you.
Lisa, if they are out there, you can call a sheriff's nonin urgency number if they're panhandling and also loitering, because they're not allowed to loiter without a purpose. All right, thank you.
I just feel bad that we wasted our resources in March, and...
No, they were told not to waste our resources. Okay, any other public comment?
Bobby Forbes.
Bobby.
I'm assuming that the city staff picked up that giant desk that was on Barton Road. I sent Conrad a message about it, and it's gone today, so I'm glad to see that. Right where the path is to go under the metal bridge, there was this giant piece of furniture that probably took three or four guys to get it there and for you to pick it up. So if it was you, thank you very much. I would also like to say something about J.C. Wallace. I see them urinating in the bushes right in front of their property. Sometimes I call, sometimes I don't. You know, you're on your way somewhere, you look up and there they are. It's disgusting, and I know you're working on it, but who knows what it'll end up in the end. So on Sunday, there was an incident with a cat that had been hit by a car in Grand Terrace. My first call about it was at seven o'clock in the morning, and it wasn't until four o'clock in the afternoon when the mayor and our city manager finally responded and something was done about this cat that laid for almost nine hours, dying. City Hall, I am understanding, has code enforcement seven days a week. We should have animal control services seven days a week. When I talked to Dr. Leonard Siggs said about it yesterday, he informed me that there is now a policy where if you call for animal control, there's a fee to the resident for depending upon why you have them come out. It's the first I've heard about this. So I then called the resident that told Sig about it, and he said yes. It's come up with him twice. He wasn't charged, I don't believe, from my conversation with him, but a certain fee for a wild animal if you have caught something in a trap, a certain fee if there's a dog that's come to your property or a cat that's come to your property, it's not yours and you want them to come and pick it up, a different fee if it's a dead animal. I do all kinds of things in this town for the animals. When I found that, I told Sig that couldn't possibly be true. How could the city do that to the community in which we live? When there's a circumstance like that, that was an emergency on Sunday, I was going to go get the cat that was dying and take it to the hospital and have it euthanized. I'd have paid for that if the mayor and the city manager had not responded in the afternoon. But besides that, I would like to know if this is the new policy regarding these fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. If you see somebody urinating in the bush, you make sure you call because that's indecent exposure. Don't, sometimes you do, sometimes you don't. Always call. Conrad, you got anything to say about the fees?
No, there's no fee to help get animal control respond. There is a surrender fee if you have an animal and you turn it in at the pound, because you're turning in your animal, that is a surrender fee. And there is a fee if you want us to come onto your property and pick up a dead animal.
Is it on your animal?
If it's on your property, it's your animal.
That's not true.
So if it's on your property, there is a fee for us to come pick it up. And I'm not going to get in an argument with you here. There is a fee to come on your property, pick up a dead animal.
Okay, we have any other public comments?
No, sir.
All right. I'm just going to go ahead and move to special presentation, recognize certificates presented to the office by the office assembly member, Assemblywoman Latisha Castillo. Introduce Tony Rosales. Is that how you say it? Rosales, Representative to Office of Assembly Member, Assemblywoman, always get mixed up, Assembly Member, Assemblywoman. Latisha Castillo and ask Tony to come to the lecture.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council members and city manager. I am honored to be here today on behalf of the Assemblywoman Latitia Castillo. Thank you to Mayor Bill Hussey, Councilwoman Sabino and City Manager Bulowicz for maintaining open communication with the Assemblywoman's District Office during the prolonged blackouts earlier this month. As a field representative, it was a tremendous help to have frontline insight into the needs of the city. This open communication has resulted in a letter to the governor authored by Assemblywoman Latitia Castillo to urge him to expand the state of emergency to include Harupa Valley and Grand Terrace. Tonight, we recognize and applaud the small businesses who stepped up during this prolonged power outage. It was a blessing to witness these businesses owner, business owners step in and provide any assistance in whatever form, whether it was warm meals, ice to store food, or a place to charge their medical devices. They opened their doors and pulled together to serve the city at a time like this. I would now like to present certificates of recognition to these businesses.
What we'll do, I'll read my proclamation too, and then we'll stand up here and we'll call out the people, but before we do that, the businesses. So I have a city Grand Terrace proclamation, and this is for everybody. Whereas the city of Grand Terrace values and cherishes the local businesses, which they play a vital role in supporting the community throughout the circumstances, and whereas these demonstrate extraordinary hospitality, resilience during the recent power outage, ensuring that the comfort of well-being and the patriots and staff end. The staff at the business went above and beyond providing great service despite the challenges, conditions, amplifying dedication and community spirit, and unwavering commitment maintaining a welcome environment and offer assistance to those in need and deeply appreciate. The city of Grand Terrace acknowledges the significance, contribution as the businesses in fostering a sense of solidarity and support with the community during difficult times. Therefore, in the result, the city of Grand Terrace extends a heartfelt gratitude. The businesses were extorting hospitality and outstanding service during the recent power outage. Being a future resolve, I, Bill Hussey, the mayor of City of Grand Terrace, along with my fellow councilmembers, encourage all residents to be recognized and support and amplify efforts and unwavering commitment in the community. It's kind of hard just to leave a blank when I got all these people to read here. So Tony, we'll stand up here and I'll have the council then we'll call out people, all right?
This is Assemblywoman Latitia Castillo. I'd like to first recognize Smart Time Liquor. Next, we would like to recognize Woody's Classic Grill.
Nickelodeon Pizza for supplying ice and stuff, so we appreciate how you did this and gave supplies and helped out Grand Terrace at the time. We really appreciate you guys stepping out and not only you, but you know, there's a lot of people here that help, you know, like we sort of had the seniors and people, you know, what anybody could do, just to take care of that simple, kind, hard gesture, take care of your fellow.
Would the council like to say any words for everybody who volunteered? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you personally from myself to all of you for all that you did, Freddie, Jason, Mike and everyone. It's a real community spirit. Thank you, Chris, and everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. I just want to thank all of you on behalf of our residents here in Grand Terrace, and I'd also like to thank all the people who couldn't be here tonight. We all sacrificed and stepped up and really showed our love to our neighbors throughout the outage, the multiple outages we've had. It's one of the things that makes our community so special, and I know, looking out here in the audience and seeing the business owners that are here, I know you sacrificed as well, and you know, we can't thank you enough. I know your, your operations were interrupted, your employees were sent home, and I know some of you still paid them and came out of pocket to support not only your employees but your neighbors. And we just want to recognize everything you've done and all the volunteers that helped out at the senior center and Blue Mountain Senior Villas over the course of the outages. There's too many to list, but I'd like to thank each and every one of them as well for helping our seniors and people, the most vulnerable people in our community. So thank you again.
Well, we have Gary that just walked in, and we want to thank you, Gary. I know you're a busy man. Councilman Wilson, do you want to say something?
Just an atta boy for all of you. It's great to be in a community. I've been here for 45 years, and it's amazing how it's grown, but also how this togetherness has grown as well. This was a drill, though, of course. You know, we didn't lose sewer. Yes, we lost some water service, but in the long run, this is a drill. So this is what we would be looking at if we had a major disaster, and as inconvenient as this was, well, fire department knows. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, did you want to say?
Again, there's nothing I can add to what everyone else has set up here. I mean, just the community here in Grand Terrace, the coming together and our neighbors in Colton, you know, for stepping up to support after seeing, you know, what we were going through at one point with 100% of the city being without service. And for those of you who had to make those modifications just to keep your businesses open and making sure that we were able to provide to some of the most vulnerable in our community, thank you. Truly thank you for everything that you have done.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go to recess, a closed session, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, pursuit of paragraph four subdivision D, section 5495, 6.9, number of potential cases won. So we're going to go to closed session, then we'll come back out, so thank you, everyone. All right, we're going to go and reconvene from closed session. Not to report, uh, city attorney, do you have anything you want to say?
Only, Mr. Mayor, we had one closed session item on anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation for one potential case. Update and information was provided by the city attorney. Discussion was had, there was no reportable action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So item E, consent counter, the following consent counter items are expected to be routine and non-controversy. If acted upon in a city council, any one time without discussion, any council member, staff member or citizen may request removal of the item from a consent counter. Is there any public comment?
No, sir, but there is an update to the meeting minutes for January 14, 2025 for items two and three under consent. There was an update, and I provided a copy for each and one of you at the dais.
So the council have, like to remove any of these for discussion, or would you like to go ahead and make a motion and approval for a consent counter?
Move the consent counter.
Second. First, by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, public hearing, item three. Oh, before I get going on this, let me make an announcement. We're going to be closing in honor of Aunt Peta who just passed away. I don't know the details, Sunday. Councilmember Wilson, would you like to say anything about?
As we know, Aunt Peta was an incredibly fine person, very soft-spoken, very health-conscious. Her husband, Tony Peta, was the first mayor for the city of Grand Terrace right after it was incorporated. They worked in lockstep. They were very aware of community needs, and Ann donated on behalf of her husband this two-acre parcel that, that we are putting some, together some drawings in relation to a library and some other facilities. Knowing her for the last 40 years, plus or minus, I don't think I've ever known such a gentle person, and she really keenly cared about everybody. She, she volunteered in the library, she volunteered in the historical society for uber amount of days. Just the world was a better place with Ann in it. And I feel a real loss.
Thank you. Anybody else like to say a few words for Ann? I'll just say, go ahead, Councilmember Allen.
Well, I just, I've lived in this city with my family for more than 25 years, and I remember that the Peta family has been impactful that entire time, and I've learned about the impacts they've had in this community ever since its founding. And I believe that the choices and decisions that Tony and Ann made years ago and continue to make all the way through will impact the city and the families for generations to come, all for the better, and I thank them for that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, I just want to say, you know, the Peta family, you know, our condolences and prayers for comfort for you. Ann is a beautiful woman. I didn't know Tony, but they were the founding couple of Grand Terrace. You know, they're the ones that put Grand Terrace on the map, and their leadership has really brought this, this way we're a city, because of their leadership. But we thank them very much, and we're blessed to have such a beautiful couple that resigned in Grand Terrace. So to Ann's family, you know, prayers for comfort. God bless. Okay, public hearings, 2020, number item three, 2025-2026 Community Development Block Grant Program presented by Ms. Tillman, Senior Management Analyst. It's all yours, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. Shanita Tillman, Senior Management Analyst. The staff report is for the CDBG funding recommendations for the 25-26 program year. The staff report before you supports the following goal, develop and implement successful partnerships, ensuring effective collaboration with community groups and both private and public sector agencies to facilitate the delivery of services benefiting youth, seniors and our community as a whole. The Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program aims to enhance low and moderate income communities, offering funding for capital improvements and public services projects in participating cities. These projects include building community facilities, parks and roads, and providing services to residents and supporting initiatives for job creation. We may fund four projects. We have banked approximately $53,000 in unprogrammed funds, which is simply funds that were carried over from previous year's projects. The following list is a list of the eligible applications that were received, and that was from San Bernardino County, Grand Terrace Library Adult Literacy Program, Family Service Association, Senior Nutrition, Family Service Association, Senior Center Coordinator, City of Grand Terrace Management Analyst, Senior Services Coordinator, and Girls on the Run Inland Empire Youth Empowerment, Community Health Wellness and Educational Outreach. Before you is a list of the following programs. So the Adult Literacy Program supports illiterate adults with tutoring, literacy skills and self-confidence, fostering participation in job applications, voting, and aligning with the vision for lifelong learning, benefiting both adults and their children. Also, FSA has been in place since they establish, since establishing a program coordinator position in 2017, and they seek continued funding for the Senior Center Nutrition and the Senior Center Coordinator. One of the new applications comes from the city of Grand Terrace for a Management Analyst, Senior Services Coordinator position. The goal of this position is to onboard a full-time city employee who will expand the city's, the senior services program. Since COVID-19, the needs of the cities, of the city has evolved, and we aim to provide direct services to better address these changes rather than continuing to subcontract them. Currently, the Senior Center operates from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM with most activities ending before lunch, except for bingo and pool. We aim to extend the hours, ensuring the space is fully utilized with activities throughout the day. While this position will continue to work alongside FSA's Senior Nutrition Program, it will focus on offering a broader range of programs for seniors, including CPR training, emergency evacuation drills, health and wellness education such as hygiene, computer classes and personal equipment training, while continuing well-loved activities like bingo and sewing. bingo and sewing. Excuse me. Our goal is to keep seniors active and engaged by identifying an individual who is dedicated to our community and passionate about advancing the well-being of this often overlooked segment of society. The last application and newly introduced comes from Girls on the Run Inland Empire, with the goal of recruiting and training these at least four coaches to empower 40 to low, excuse me, 40 low to moderate income participants, grades third through eighth, and improving physical activity, confidence, and healthy behaviors. Participants will apply their skills they gained by creating a community impact project and celebrating their achievements at a end-of-the-season 5K event. The program will conclude with evaluations to measure its impact and identify areas of improvement. Their mission is to inspire girls to be joyful, healthy, and confident through the combination of running, life skills lessons, and mentorships. Now, the list before you, I would like to point out a change to the recommended amount found in your attachment. We did receive an edit from the county that aligns with our intentions, and this table before you reflects the requested and recommended amounts. Staff recommends utilizing the entire allocated amount towards the city's management analyst position, as well as $18,000 towards of unprogrammed funds. Family Services Association, San Bernardino County, and Girls on the Run Inland Empire would receive $10,000 each of unprogrammed funds for a total requested and recommended amount of $100,000. And staff is recommending the conducting of a public hearing for the recommendation of eligible applications for the 2526 project year, and prioritizing funding allocations and authorized staff to submit city, the city's CDBG funding recommendations to the San Bernardino County Economic Development Agency. And I'm available for any questions.
Council, have any questions? Councilman Allen?
Thank you, Ms. Twain, for that report. I'd like to ask you about this, the new applicant, Girls on the Run, or Girls on the Run Inland Empire. I just want to clarify, I, I think it's a great thing, anything that has to do with activity, especially for youth. But here's my question to you. I noticed that their address is in Riverside, and I know CDBG funds come from, we get them through San Bernardino County. So has, is, are they on board? Is the county good to go with, with our CDBG funds being used for an entity in Riverside? And my second question to that would be, where is the participation gonna be taking place at for this event? You know, where, is this gonna be something that happens in Grand Terrace? The 5K, for example, or the training, or whatever?
I, I'm not certain as to where their actual location for their classes will take place, but the individuals that would participate would be Grand Terrace residents.
Okay, and about the, being a Riverside County entity using San Bernardino County CDBG funds, are we good to go with that?
Yes, because all of these applications have been reviewed by San Bernardino County.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
Council have any other comments or like to make a motion? Does anybody want to make a motion for this, or they don't?
I'll make a motion to pass the item.
I'll second. Motion second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman.
Thank you.
Okay, item G, none, unfinished business. New business, Historical Cultural Activities Committee appointments. Marjorie Miller, Jason Greenlee, and we had a terrorist, you polled hers, right? So Daisy, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and members of council, Daisy Alcazar, City Clerk. The staff report before you supports all adopted goals and core values of the city's council's 2030 vision. There are, there were three applications that were submitted for the Historical and Cultural Committee. Currently, we have two vacancies due to resignations. One was Mayor Hussey's appointee, and the other was Councilmember Wilson's appointee. Earlier today, I received an email from Tara Sessena, who was one of the applicants, and she decided to withdraw her application. A copy of that email is at the dais for each and one of you. She would like to thank the council for their time and also congratulate the two other applicants. And at this time, the council may select their appointees to fill the vacancies. This concludes the report, and both applicants are here, and they will speak under public comment.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this?
Jason Greeley.
Good evening. The Historical and Cultural Committee is something I've tried to get into for a while now, and I've, I believe that I have qualifications for this, as I've lived here. I was at the first city council meeting, I'm at this one right now, so I've been at all points in between, and this town, I've watched it grow, and I've watched it morph into what it is, and I just think that I really want to get involved with the historical side of the, my, my hometown. So that's really all, I, that's all I want, and I want to be involved, so. Thank you for your time.
So you probably made a lot of history here, huh?
I, I, then no comment.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, thank you guys so much.
And now we have Michael Miller.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. I'm just here to speak on behalf of Marjorie Miller. Marjorie Miller's been a pillar of Grand Terrace, and through her paper, she definitely knows the history of Grand Terrace and also current events in the history. Marjorie Miller is also a personal friend, so I would like to recommend her to the Historical Society.
Thank you. Is there any relationship, since you guys got the last name?
No, seems like it is, but nope.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, does this, council have any questions? All right. So, uh, you said it's, these are the two, then, of covering myself and Councilmember Wilson, right?
Yes, you each would have to pick an, an appointee.
Oh, well, Councilman Wilson, I'll let you pick the first one.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate Jason Greeley for this, this opportunity, and I know he'll do a good job, and he'll contribute to the historical aspect of this, which is what we need. Thank you.
I'll second your nomination.
So you want us to vote on individuals, or are we just gonna do this, both of them?
We could do it together.
Okay, well, I'll nominate Marjorie Miller, she's gonna represent me, and, you know, I know she'll do a really good job, and, you know, proud of Historical Society. You know, a minute there, I thought it was gonna be history, not being around anymore, but, you know, it's a, it's a great little place, we have so much to learn, and, you know, I know Marjorie put good articles out there, and it's really interesting, especially everything in history, you know, about our little town. And it's my honor to nominate her, and thank you, Marjorie, for putting your name in the hat, we really appreciate it. And thank you, Jason, for putting your name in the hat.
I'll second your nomination, Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second for Ms. Miller and Mr. Greenlee, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Congratulations. Oh, by the way, you're not getting paid for this, so. It's a freebie. All right, future agenda items. At this time, the city council may propose an item to discuss in our action for future duly-agenda city council meetings, that consensus of the majority of the quorum is required to place an item on a future agenda. Does the council have any future agenda items they want to place on there?
So I just, this, this is a future agenda item that I had brought up last year, but we haven't seen anything on it yet, and I just think that we really should focus on our 2030 vision, because 2030's gonna just ride around the corner when it comes to planning a city. And I think it's time for us to be looking at our 2040, maybe even 2050 vision, doing a revision and an update, and planning the future of this city down the road, the way our, the council members back in, you know, 10 and 15 and 20 years ago, sat down and said, hey, let's make a 2030 vision, so that by 2030, the city will be, have a, and have these goals in place. And I think we should continue that tradition, or that, that practice on, and I think it's smart. And so I'd just like to, to ask again that we, you know, update our 2030 vision to reflect, you know, the future of the city.
Conrad, what was the, the thing on that, Councilman Allen requested last year, and we made a motion on it?
We were intending on bringing this back as part of the, prior to the budgeting process in our future, our priority projects, as we do as part of the budgeting process, so we could bring all of this and roll it into one package.
Well, that'd be acceptable to me, I just want to make sure it hasn't been, you know, put on the back burner.
We haven't blown it off.
Okay.
So we're still good on it?
Yes, yes.
And, um...
Go ahead.
No, it's not a future agenda item, I think, I'll save it for comments.
Okay. Well, what got my attention today was the fees for picking up animals that all of a sudden the property owner gets hit on, so I would like to look at ways of eliminating the fees or updating our animal control fees and see what we need to do, especially, we have a lot of wild donkeys, I had a wild donkey get killed in somebody's, well, died in somebody's yard, it shouldn't be the property owner's responsibility to remove a wild donkey. The city has to step up sometimes to do this stuff. And if it's a dead dog, I don't want to pay for somebody else's dog to be in my yard, so I would like to look at possibly eliminating those fees or revisit our animal control fees if, for future, to see what we need to do, what we need to add, or what we need to take off, so. If I could get a second on that, so we could look into that, appreciate it.
Second.
Second by Matt Brown. Please vote. Oh, you have something to say? Okay. Mayor Protem, you have something? Did you want to bring an agenda? Go ahead.
So, what caught my attention, well, it catches my attention every day. Anybody driving around town sees the issues with public safety in our area, and so I've had to make maybe three calls in the last week. There was a, school was letting out, and we had two unhoused in the area and hiding behind trees in the cul-de-sac by GT pit stop, and a little guy, probably six, seven years old, alone, walking along by Cow's Gate, to which I stopped to make sure the kid was safe, but also contacted sheriff, at least to do, you know, also to patrol, because our kids are walking home from school. I was coming out of the business plaza the other day, and a gentleman who was having a mental health issue then began coming at my car, angry, screaming at me, and then walked around the front, I couldn't turn. And so then, again, I had to make another call. We had another, you know, public comment today with concern with what's going on. I'm calling sheriffs, because that's what we're supposed to do, and they don't have record of what is happening in this city if we only post it on Facebook, or if we only show up here to let people know, hey, there's an issue. Those types of things need to be addressed in that minute and in that hour. It's the same thing as raising a child. If a child misbehaves and you deal with it, you know, the next day, they don't remember exactly what action they caused, and so those actions have to be dealt with in that moment. And with the unhoused, if they're having a mental health issue, it's not only that they might be unsafe to us, but they might be unsafe to themselves. And you might be the last person to see them and to have witnessed and could have done something. And so I would like for an agenda item, in some regard, of initiating and developing and designing a program of at least a see something, say something, because the calls are going to, the, the calls aren't going to our sheriff's department, they're not going to public safety, they're going on Facebook, and they fall on deaf ears. It's impossible for this dais to monitor Facebook posts. Facebook is the 92313, 92313 community, those are not city official pages, and the sheriffs are not monitoring those. And it's very hard to get people to understand that we need to funnel those issues somewhere else, to the proper location, because at the end of the day, when our lieutenant is here, we're asking, what calls did you get and where were they from? I mean, there have been multiple robberies that have taken place over in that Loud Burger Center, to which one of the, one of the employees said, that car is here almost every week, and those same three people come in and they rob us. And it wasn't until it was brought to our attention that this has been going on for, I don't know how long, but no one's said anything. And so those are issues, and people need to know, it's okay to call the sheriffs. You know, I, I know we only have one, but if those numbers keep going up, that they have to call for outside resources, then so be it. That's what the voters asked for, not to have another sheriff here, for us to call for outside resources. And if those are the numbers they want, and they want us to do this job, then I want a program in place of a see something, say something, get it off of Facebook, and send those numbers where they need to go, so they can see exactly what their vote has given us. Thank you.
So your agenda item is to start a campaign and see something, say something, so we could educate the public?
It's to move those calls to the appro, to the proper authority, so that way they can be accounted for, because I don't think they are. I think a lot of it goes to Facebook, and a lot of it comes here, and people are upset, and they're angry, and they don't feel like they're being heard, and they don't feel safe, but how do we keep people safe if the numbers don't match the complaints?
So what do you want to do on the agenda, what you want your title to be, Mayor Protem?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you, are you talking about something like a neighborhood watch? Something like that? Because, I mean, you see something, say something, it almost sounds like neighborhood watch.
Neighborhood watch is somebody going around and making sure. But see something, say something is a program where if you feel like something is wrong or you're concerned, then make the call.
That's like neighborhood watch, and I know our sheriff supports that and, and goes to any neighborhood or community that wants to instant, implement one, but yeah, I mean, see something, say something, whatever you want to call it, I think it's great getting the community members. You know, on, on social media last week, I'm sure you saw this, there was a, a servant, a resident who had his tool stolen out of his truck over near where I live.
And a car was stolen.
Yeah, and there was, in one night, there were five trucks that were broken into that had their tools stolen out of them, and, and so, but my neighbor who had that happen, he is really wanting to start that, one of those, like neighborhood watch. So I think you've got a, you're on to something there.
Okay, so would the agenda be to look into start our own?
See something, say something program.
Say so, okay. See something, say something.
Campaign.
Campaign, and possibly establish your own internal neighborhood watch?
I think that if that is something that comes from it, but I, my agenda item is a see something, say something campaign.
All right, I'll second. Any comments? Well, we're not making comments on this, just to get to the future agenda, so I'll second, please vote.
I believe we may have a comment. Do we have a comment on that before we vote?
On a future agenda?
Yeah.
I never had a comment on a future agenda.
But we do have one, so.
Okay.
Since it is on the agenda.
All right.
Lisa Green?
And again, for the record, we're not actually discussing the item tonight, it's discussing bringing the item back for consideration. So just want to be clear on that.
Okay, because that idea, what she is just talking about right now, is a perfect example of what's happening with what we're seeing, and being able to allocate some, like a group for those, those happenings. In fact, there's a homeless, there's several home, I- In fact, there's a homeless, there's several home, I think the businesses know who our homeless people are. And for example, there's one particular lady today on the corner by McDonald's ranting and raving. And I know who she is and she's talking to herself. And then that, if that was in place, that would have been an opportunity for me, because I know who that person is, to contact that group, you know, say something, see something, say something. I think it's, it's, you hit the nail on the head with that. Um, because, you know, your local businesses and the people around you know kind of what's going on. So then we have a place to help those people, you know? I, I don't want to have to always call the sheriff, but apparently this is what we're on, that have to do. And that would help alleviate the sheriff department.
We pay a lot of money for the sheriff. We, we need to use that money. I mean, we pay a lot of money for that.
I know. And driving away this morning, away from this particular homeless lady that I know, you know, like you said, that could have been the last time we see her because she could go crazy and, you know, go into McDonald's or.
Okay.
You know.
Thank you. But yes, please call the sheriffs. Anybody else?
Bobby Forbes.
Bobby Forbes.
Thank you, Michelle. I only heard part of what you were saying, but we had mailbox theft in my neighborhood on Sunday night, I think. And it's on video. Jeremy Briggs, who was on our planning commission a few years ago, has it on camera. The same vehicle hit his mailbox six, eight weeks ago. And all the mailboxes in the neighborhood are affected. Mr. and Mrs. Drew had a large check stolen out of their mailbox the last time for a large amount of money that was cashed. So this is stuff that's going on in town all the time. I often joke, I'm not out and about in the morning, but I'm out and about in the evening, like after this meeting, because I'm checking my listings and doing things in town. But things are different in the morning than they are in the night in this community. And this town shuts down at night. Jason's up, I'm up, there's a few of us that are out and about. But for the most part, the working class is in their home. And the cameras, they see the crime, but nothing happens. You know, these people have no license plates or they're blacked out or whatever it happens to be. But they drop, the car stops that went into the street and then they get out and they walk. So dogs don't bark. I call often when the dogs are barking at my house at night because I'm awake. And I know the difference if it's a coyote or if it's a person walking in my neighborhood from the way my dog is barking. And I think this is a fabulous idea, thank you. Um, but something needs to go on, whether it be the community watch, calling, not 911. You know, we promote the, the private or the non-emergency phone number all the time. But our community is being attacked. They're stealing dogs and taking them down to the, underneath the bridge to their part, to their little homeless camp down there. A dog was picked up down there two and a half or so weeks ago that had been stolen from High Grove. I just heard a story tonight of a dog that was stolen yesterday by a homeless person and brought it back and winning money. It's, it's going, there's all levels of the crime happening in our town. And yes, there's always been crime, but it's changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Freddie Albera.
Good evening, guys. Thank you. I would like to get involved with the public safety because I've been around with two businesses on east side of town and I would like to speak about a couple of things. Uh, uh, got a lady here, she spoke about everything going on with the kids walking. I see that all day, every day because my business is on Barn Road. I catch both sides of the streets. And I would like to say we do need more sheriff in town, definitely, for my safety, safety of my people, my workers and my community, of course. Um, especially across the street where JW people, a lot of people here in town, I'd like to clear this out. Uh, my businesses are struggling from this problem. It's not good for my businesses. Uh, I get these comments, how much more money are you making now? Because I sell alcohol and tobacco. And to be honest with you guys, it's been downhill for me. Cause I build my businesses and most of you guys know, I spent tons of money on those businesses recently and I built them to be a high-end, clean, um, environment for the city of Grand Terrace because we do have a good, how you say that? Uh, good reputation for being a nice, clean town. And that's what I did. So people walking like zombies in my store or outside of my store, it's definitely not good for my business. Or for the kids that walk in and come get ice cream after, you know, after school or going to McDonald's. And I appreciate all you guys' hard work, bringing all these small businesses into, or not small, they're big businesses, actually. They bring in a lot of revenue to all of us. That's definitely a good thing. I've been pushing for that for years, but definitely we're on the board. Uh, the city manager here is doing a good job. Uh, even me and him, we always, you know, bump heads, but that's, that's business. And, uh, you know, I appreciate you. And one more thing, I want to thank everyone for, for you guys doing. And definitely we need to look into it more. And, excuse me, one more thing I'd like to add. Back in the days when I got in here in 2003, we used to have a couple older, a couple, I guess they were the Syrian citizens patrols. And I used to see them all the time and I don't think we have that anymore. Uh, we'd like to have them back because if they're driving around town, they will be going out for the kids. And if we can, for that, we can get some volunteers. There's a lot of people in town who like, I would love to volunteer every day, two hours when the school came out. I'll go around, you know, make sure the kids are okay. I have no problem doing that because I have kids and I would like to, you know, raise my kids the right way like everybody else likes to raise their kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Freddie. Anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Do we have any other future agenda items request? Councilor Wilson?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, now that we're kind of in the saddle in relation to the increased traffic from High Grove, it would seem to me that it might be appropriate to have an agenda item to update us on where we are so far as the reimbursement that we received based on the density that the county of Riverside originally approved coming from south to north on Mount Vernon. Uh, and then making a right and then going eastbound on Barn Road. Uh, would seem to me that would be good for us to look at, at the numbers because $350,000 is not going to go very far. And it, it would seem to me that now that D.R. Horton is in that area and they've built some additional units and there've been quite a few units that have been built on the west side of Mount Vernon. Uh, we'd like to kind of take a look at that and update ourselves and see if it's worth it for us to approach, uh, the county as well as the developers and, and get an, an equal share of money that we need to, to be able to make improvements and, and to cope with this. Otherwise, we're going to get overrun. So I'd like to propose that as an agenda item.
I'll second that one.
We have a comment on?
No, sir.
Okay. First and a second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Any other ones? Well, I have one last one. So we hear about crime. We hear about residents, I don't want vigilantes out there. And what was the thing that our citizens did is present a one cent sales tax? The easiest thing in the world that could have gave us an extra sheriff, but it failed. I would like to look into bringing that back two years from now, but have the city run the campaign. And I'm willing to put my mayor title on the line if you want to say I'm a tax person. But I also want to maintain the safety and security of our city and our residents, our businesses and these children. We shouldn't have to be scrambling around to see how we're going to protect ourselves. One sheriff is not going to do it. One sheriff will never do it. Crime has increased. You know, they're going to be out there, they're going to be a little bit more sneaky now because, you know, there's no more of this little misdemeanor things. As far as stealing from mailboxes, I saw a car in broad daylight with three kids in there following the mailman. I got their license, videotaped them and everything. Well, the car was a rental with a stolen credit card. They were waving to me when they did, they were laughing. So I would like to look into and continue that thing for enhanced law enforcement and bring it to the voters. And this is a big step, it's a two-year thing. But I think the residents, we were so close and I think one of the reasons why it didn't pass because there wasn't town halls or there wasn't, the verbiage wasn't written the correct way. And I like to bring in the people who are the naysayers to be on a policy committee to come in there and step forward because since you guys have the answers, I want to hear them. So that's my motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, please vote.
I'd like to make a comment there.
Okay, go ahead.
I want everyone here to understand that I strongly support law enforcement and I, I think that we do need additional public safety in Grand Terrace. But two years is a long time. We don't know what we're going to be faced with at the time. Crime trends, population growth, new businesses. Um, and I don't think the time is right to move this item at this point. Um, so I'm going to be voting no.
Okay, please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Jeff Allen, Councilmember Doug Wilson, Mayor Hussey and Mayor Counts, excuse me, Councilmember Brown voting no. And Mayor Protam Wilson, you did not vote. I'm sorry, Mayor Protam Sabino, you did not vote.
Did it work?
Do you mind redoing it, everybody? What's your vote? It's an A? Okay, thank you.
All right. So Councilmember comments, Councilmember Matt Brown.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I think this has been a great discussion about public safety tonight and I'm, I'm glad that Mayor Protam Sabino brought it up. Um, one of the things that I'd like to do right away, and it doesn't require an agenda item, but I'll be, uh, talking with the city manager Conrad and Sheriff Shannon Dykis about restarting the citizens patrol program in Grand Terrace. Um, one of the things that we've had is an issue with recruiting volunteers for that program in the past. But I will look to the sheriff to see if we can get a dedicated car for our city. Um, and what that'll do is now that we have a substation here in town, would allow us to park that vehicle here. So it would be readily accessible for when Freddie wants to go out on patrol. Um, and one of the issues that we had with volunteers is you have to make a time commitment. You've got to go through a training academy that takes several weeks and you have to work regular hours every month. Well, I think we can do that if we make that, those resources available to our residents here in town. I think that there's a, a real strong desire to add an extra layer of safety in our community and a few, just a few citizens patrols a week. And, you know, whether it's, it's during school hours, after school, in the evenings. Um, those folks are on the radio and they're, they've got a direct line to dispatch. They're calling the deputies and the deputies are, have their back. So we can be assured prompt responses when they're out and they see, um, some of the issues that we have with mentally ill homeless people on our streets that are presenting a threat, um, mail theft and other property-related crimes that we've all discussed this evening. So anyway, that's going to be my priority for over the next couple of weeks to get the ball rolling on that. I'm going to mention it, I wanted to mention it here now so you all know that we're going to take those actions to move that program forward. And I would look, uh, you can look forward to something in the Grand Terrace City News at the appropriate time when we have an academy for citizens patrol volunteers. And I would encourage you to pass the word to your friends, family and neighbors, anyone who's interested and has the physical ability to serve, um, to dedicate some time volunteering to make our community safer. Thank you.
Councilman Allen.
Hey, you know, Councilmember Brown, I think that's great that you're going to do that. One of the things that in the past that the, the COP members have told me and maybe make a note of this, you can use this in your discussion is that, you know, like you said, you know, certain days and if they choose, well, I've got the, I can work these days this, this week and they go down to Third Street to Central Station. Well, then, you know, the person down there is going to sell and well, we don't need you in Grand Terrace today. We need you in Highland or we need you in Musqueway or, you know, something like that. And so our residents end up patrolling in, you know, somewhere out of town. So it'd be great if we could get them dedicated, a dedicated, like you said, a car, but so that they can, so this is dedicated just to Grand Terrace. I know that also some people had asked, uh, had talked about, uh, this idea kind of floated around of this, with some of the residents I'd talked with was, um, the city's own COPs, you know, like, you know, not the sheriff's department COP, but the Grand Terrace COPs. But I think having the sheriff's department COPs is great because that radio contact, you know, with, uh, should, with the deputy right there. But anyway, that's, but I just wanted to mention that to you about how some of them had mentioned to me in the past, not being able to choose Grand Terrace to be in, having to go to other areas. So it'd be great if, yeah. But what I wanted to mention, mayor, in my comments is, um, I, since our last meeting, I attended the San Bernardino County Veterans Advisory Committee. And I just wanted to let anybody who's got interested in veterans issues in San Bernardino County, there's a new director of San Bernardino County Department of Veterans Affairs and a new deputy director. Uh, Matt Knox is the director and the deputy director is Demaryius Carmichael. They're both military vets and, um, they're well skilled in, in government bureaucracy. And so I think that they will manage that office well. It's the best county, uh, veteran service office in the state, has been for several years, brings in more federal dollars to this county through the Veterans Disabled Compensation and Pension Program than any other county in the state. It's in the multiple tens of millions of dollars, all because we have the best veterans service officers in the state here in our county. And I encourage everyone to use them. That's where I send all, any veteran that asks me for advice. I want to ask the city manager, the mayor about, I think that we, something needs to be happening with the Greens Group project. I mean, that we made some concessions five years ago on that project when they were whining about COVID. And now it's just sitting there growing weeds. And I think that, that, uh, we need to, something needs to be, we need to get some, some kind of update on where that project stands. And, um, I would, um, like to also remind everyone that, that I think there's lunch at the senior center tomorrow, right? Still, 11:00 a.m.? And if, uh, it's not, not a bad lunch, if you want to join, join us over there. So, um, that is all I have, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Councilman Wilson?
I did attend on behalf of the mayor, the Women's Club, uh, their silent auction. Uh, the food was terrific. And even though there were only about 30 people there, uh, they had the silent auction anyway. And by George, I was the only one that bid on the uncirculated $5 bills. Uh, cost me $20 and I, and I made 50, so that worked out good. I think it's fabulous that the Women's Club is still such a, such an active organization. Uh, and again, I, I think I want to emphasize that the, uh, how important it is for our community to have these kinds of organizations, especially when we have emergency situations. You can't replace those kinds of circumstances. And, uh, I know by 45 years worth of marriage, 46, I'm sorry, that women are really powerful. So, uh, I appreciate it and I appreciate the opportunity to go to the event and I'll be glad to go to any more. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Sabino?
Um, I recently attended the 60-year anniversary of Azure Hills Church with the mayor. Um, thank you for.
Thank you for inviting me. And just a beautiful event. We're grateful for what they've done just to support the community, having been a staple here in Grand Terrace. And, you know, just the number of people and what they do for us. I mean, our Light Up Grand Terrace event always is just such a blessing every year. And so congratulations to them and, you know, we, we wish them many more. The mayor and councilmember Brown and I also attended the Esmeralda Vazquez and Associates. She has grown in her business. She serves providing tax services to monolingual, Spanish-speaking clientele at her location. And it was a great opportunity for us to be able to engage Congressman Aguilar's office. And we were able to let them know and talk to them about the issues that we're having here in the city with the power shut-offs. And we understand that, you know, November and then the many we had here in January, that it really just has taken a toll, not only on our residents, our families, our children, you know, with, with our kids, even in the schools, not having light or being able to be provided an adequate lunch due to whether it was refrigeration, lighting, or whatnot. And not having internet service because the internet service is not supported after 72 hours. And so, you know, just letting them know the communication that we've had with Spectrum, with AT&amp;T, that once we lose internet service, all of us are moved to, you know, cell coverage, in which the cell coverage cannot handle the community that, within city limits, for all of us to be on it. All of us got throttled, we couldn't access anything. Add to that the maps, the outage maps by Edison that weren't accurate, giving us those times. We have highly vulnerable communities in pockets of Grand Terrace outside of the Blue Mountain Senior Villas. There are other seniors that live in the city of Grand Terrace. There are single parents, there are parents who have disabilities and those who have medical needs within our city limits. And those are what I brought to the forefront. I also talked to his rep about, Congressman Aguilar represents San Bernardino County in general. And we have 40% living 200% below the poverty line. And of that 40%, 50% have food insecurity. And in San Bernardino County, we have 30% with disease or disability. And so it is imperative that Grand Terrace, that, that we have a voice for Grand Terrace, that he assist us with being able to escalate the emergency declaration that we have put forth, that they understand that we are a small town where we went from 90% to 100% being completely shut down. And I can probably name maybe a few others, which would be the mountain communities, with smaller demographics, but also 100% shut down. And so, you know, those were my concerns. He's escalated it up to flagging the letter that Assemblymember Castillo has sent up, flagging that with the governor to please look at what's happening in our area. You know, we're, we're doing everything that we can, even as much as looking at, you know, what Edison can do moving forward with regard to whatever the upgrades they've made, shifting people off of the circuits so that way power can be restored sooner. I even spoke with Riverside Utility and they're running rolling blackouts over there as well. So for those who've raised the concern about, well, we should be our own municipality, the municipalities aren't exempt because they're still governed by the CPUC. That is how I've spent my time over the last few weeks. And so thank you to those who've reached out to me, who've made the phone calls. You know, I hear your concerns and, you know, your, your questions that you've brought to me. You know, we're, we're working on it. There are some things that we can't work on collaboratively, so we're not violating any Browns Act. But definitely, those things are being funneled up because collaboratively, we're trying to figure this out and make it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, congratulations Azure Hills Church. You know, we also gave them a plaque and this says, you know, may Grand Terrace and Azure Hills continue to break bread to do what God's will in this community. And they are a blessing here. And you know what gets to me about what we've done in this city? And thank you Conrad and staff, and taxpayers. Because we spend over $120,000, taxpayers' revenue, to help maintain security and safety with warming centers, extra patrol. And that was your dollars. You know, those dollars could have been used for roads, but, you know, we had to maintain, you know, public safety here. And so that's what I'm saying about the sheriffs. You know, it's, it's nice to have a, you know, the Neighborhood Watch and, and all the other programs. But when it comes down to it, you still need the muscle. So you can make a phone call, if the muscle's not there, and you're out of luck, you have to wait for backup. And we've been having, I think I saw Chevron get, something happened at Chevron where we actually had three officers there the other day. But once again, just to reemphasize, you know, if you see something bad, if you see somebody urinating in a bush, if you see somebody acting mentally unstable, call the sheriffs. Call the sheriffs. We need documentation. We need to, we need to let people know. Don't be afraid not to call them. Now, when they get there, I can't guarantee it. One officer, I can't guarantee it. But the writing's on the wall. And the writing is, we need more law enforcement. Just because Grand Terrace is up on the terrace doesn't mean we're immune for everything that's going around us. People like to come here and shop. And what I mean by that? People that want to do crimes. They could get more out of this area than they could somebody else's area. We had an attempted break-in, three houses down from me, and the people were home. It was pitch dark, they surprised a person breaking in. We had cars break in, four houses down from me. I don't know why they don't come to my house, because they'll get a surprise. But, but you have to, we have to look at the long-term solution and the permanent solution. But please call the sheriffs. So with that, city manager, you have any communication?
Yeah, real briefly. And I, I don't want to bring Greens back because we're so far down the planning path that this is, should, Barton Road specific plan should be in front of Planning Commission in March with Greens, Greens falling shortly thereafter. So one is contingent on the other. And we're far enough down that if we bring this forward now, at some point, you're going to have to hear this as an adjudicating body. And I don't want to taint that. But it is, within the next few months, we will be seeing progress on that. There's a lot of stuff that happens in the background, especially on these big planning projects. And we're, we've ground through.
Five years.
Yes. There's, there's been challenges on both sides. And the, the last, the last victory lap, I guess, on the powder out, power outage and the way everybody performed. And once again, I want to thank staff. And the one group that, that we, we kind of miss and we, we kind of overlook all the time, but is so critical to all these things that we do is our CERT team members. You know, we talked, we talked a little bit about, you know, citizens on patrol and, and police volunteers. These are the emergency volunteers. And they go through training, they have regular monthly meetings. These are the guys we call out when we, we just need to augment ourselves with warm bodies that can carry out specific tasks for us. And they're, they're a great group of people. They invest their time, their effort. They, they were in the warming centers overnight, you know, the most miserable shift, sitting there at 3 o'clock in the morning by yourself. And, and they did it with a smile and were eager to do it. So I really want to thank that CERT group, they're wonderful guys. And with that, Gary, you got anything?
Yeah, thank you, Conrad. Sorry I was at the, not here at the last meeting. Obviously, my team got deployed to the Palisades incident. We took a 30-person rescue team down and did some parcel-to-parcel searches. And a couple of frequent questions that we get that I'll answer very quickly is, one of them is, if you go, we brought not only the Rescue Task Force that we call it, we also sent two strike teams. And one of the questions that I get commonly asked is, if the engine here is part of those, those, those strike teams, does the city go unfilled? And the answer is absolutely not. In fact, this engine company is not on any of our strike team lists. And we take it so far because this is an island for us, that we consider it, that even when we have an engine company from Grand Terrace go on an extended incident, we move an engine company in right away. So this is a priority for us. It will remain a priority for us and we backfill this constantly. In fact, out of the 1,300 calls that the city ran last year, that the city of Grand Terrace ran, that this engine company, they covered 97.2% of the calls themselves. And the remainder of the calls were covered by cover engines that came in that we deployed in on those extended incidents. So even on the commercial fires and the structure fires, this, this company is filled right away. The other thing I get, I get commonly asked is, during the wind events, do we have any extra staffing? The answer is yes. And this last, this, this last wind event, we had 10 extra engines staffed here in the county. Sometimes they were over here, sometimes they were in the city of San Bernardino, sometimes they were in the unincorporated areas of the county. They are here for initial attack resources. And we use them based on the fact that we get pre-positioned approval by OES. And every time, the state has given us the approval for the pre-positioned strike teams. Another question we, we quite frequently get, since, since the Palisades, is the Palisades fire something that could happen here in the county or in, more specifically, here in the city of Grand Terrace? Anything's possible, but I will tell you this, highly unlikely. And I'll tell you why. The contiguous fuels that we have here are not like what they saw in the Palisades. They are not like what you see in the front country of the San Bernardino Mountains. They are light flashy fuels. And the water source that we have here is dramatically different than what was down there, without getting into the, into the specifics. And we have a large contingency of Master Mutual Aid Resources around us. So all of those factors play into if an event like this, like that happened down there, could happen here. You can never say never, but at the end of the day, I believe that we're well-prepared. That's going to be a large topic of conversation amongst, you start to see it in the news right now. And I will tell you that for the city of Grand Terrace, we are well-prepared for an event like that. That is all I have, Conrad. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Attorney, you have anything you want to say? No? Okay. One other thing before I ever miss. The mayor of Colton, Frank Navarro, his wife passed away, too. Mary Lou, so keep them in your prayer. Long battle of cancer. So, you know, I had a lot of conversations with Frank and he's doing well, he's keeping busy. But, you know, if you see him, just give your condolences to him. And once again, we're going to adjourn this meeting in honor of Aunt Peta. You know, pretty much the pioneer of Grand Terrace. You know, the, the lady that set the highest standards for us. I always remember, my fondest memory of her is when during the Historical Society, her and her, the ladies, they will have everything going. You know, they didn't want any help or anything. They had their little routine and, and that was it for their dinners. And that was the highlights. Such a blessing. So the next regular city council meeting will be held on February 11th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Any requests to have the item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk. Thank you, staff, thank you, CERT, thank you, volunteers. Thank you, businesses, for everything you do for Grand Terrace. God bless. Good night.